Oh, call in the order.
Put your hands into the leg of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go next.
Second.
Second. All bear say aye.
Aye.
All hold, motion carries. Bill? Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. No more questions. Any questions? Dominics.
There's an additional list on your desk.
Yes.
Just wants that came in the earlier stream there.
Any questions? We'll call.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightfon.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Financial reports. Candy?
Um, we have a few where we're waiting for money, um, reimbursement back from the state. Otherwise, we're never seeing any good. At least see, it looks like it's in the red, but it's not. It's, we're in the red for the money.
Boy, I said we should be under for the year because we had push through months of so much demand.
Yep.
I know it's picked up soon, Sam, but.
I can also just weigh in a little bit. Um, the state has a prioritization plan that they implement for department corrections for the time they reach capacity or employee reach capacity. And we did receive notice from Rob John earlier, well, minimally about towards the end of May, that the women's prison has reached capacity. So their prioritization plan kicked in, so anyone that's sentenced is going to sit here for a while. And the men didn't want too far from capacity. Yeah, hundreds to two hundred more males could be sent to Bismarck, but.
It's gonna be a growing problem.
Well, it is. I know last year, this time, I think I gave an update and said that we were a hundred ahead of twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. Now in twenty nineteen, we're a hundred plus in cases from twenty eighteen. And most of those are drug tests.
I'll get off the subject a little bit, but I mean, a lot of you on that. I see Brad Park County where they implemented a program for drug addiction within the jail. And if we crack for it, they're on Sunday or Saturday, they're. They've served forty-one people at the jail so far, and they only implemented it the first of January.
Do they give any specifics about what they're doing here?
Not, well, just, you know, trying to, you know, counsel.
Assess and treat, use and treat.
Yeah, assess my services. And I know social service here with the Ramby County were doing, you know, quite a deal.
Assessing.
Doing that, but it's just not very far there, you know? But we're forward down there. You see, we real big on that program. And I, I would be, you know, like he said, what else do they have to do in jail? I mean, what an opportune time to, to address the issue for.
Well, is one, one area that resources might need to go?
That's right. Yeah. And their circle of friends have totally changed probably within the jail. Their contacts, so.
Maybe.
Maybe. But I, I was quite intrigued about that.
Years and years ago, when I was in a statistics, sociological statistic type class, they were talking about incarceration rates versus treatment rates. And then at that time, every dollar that was spent for treatment was the equivalent of the five dollars spent for incarceration.
Absolutely. No question.
So.
I totally agree with that, too. You know, if you can't change your circle of friends, I guess you're probably a fall there. And you have that option in jail.
Yeah, if you be, you can.
Okay, we got off the track there, but sorry. But anything else, Candy?
I've moved to approve financials.
Okay, you have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
Have a second? We'll call.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightfon.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. Trader checks?
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions? We'll call.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightfon.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. Who will agenda? Any changes?
I did add one more site authorization.
Yes.
On the desk. Set up by six.
A motion to approve. You have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All bear say aye.
Aye.
All hold, motion carries. Crystal?
Good morning. So I worked out a few things for you guys. By the time I get done, you guys will be like, my gosh. So, um, September trainings that I have budgeted, I have to get approval on before I go ahead and sign a contract with them. But it's around eleven hundred dollars and I have twelve hundred dollars budgeted. And that training is for like the unconscious bias for all employees. And then department heads with the leadership training. And in that leadership training, we're going to cover like effective leadership, communication, leading effective teams, and conflict resolution. So I just need approval on that part of it. Should we go ahead with that?
No motion.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All bear say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All hold, motion carries. Go ahead.
And then on June twelfth, we have a diversity training coming in, and that's for the village, and that's part of our free service with them. So that'll be coming up. And then on July second, um, department heads, we discussed having a picnic for employees. And the last one we did, um, the department heads contribute to it. So, and they're willing to contribute to the picnic, you know, for the cost of the food instead of having like a potluck and employees having the right stuff. So I mentioned to the department heads, I would bring it to commissioners and see if there was any interest in the commissioners possibly pitching for it.
I did have to.
Okay.
I'll buy some cash. I'll go shake that. What's good?
Okay.
When, this was July second?
July second, yeah. And I think that meeting sort of commissioned me in that day also.
What time were you thinking about doing it?
Um, you know what? I guess we didn't really say a specific time. Um, it would be nice that I have some commissioners present at the picnic. And so whatever time would work best for you guys to come in or be here or just.
What day is July second?
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, second. It's the first Tuesday meeting there.
You're gonna do that in the courthouse? Is that what you're planning on?
Well, we were planning on doing it outside, either in the front or back here, but we're waiting to see on the construction schedule.
Okay.
Kevin was checking on that. But otherwise, I think we'd just in the basement in the room, so.
And you've scheduled the time?
No. No, not yet.
Not yet.
It's kind of like, it was for you guys to see what the time was.
Any ideas from the commissioners?
Well, it's technically, will I be right around noon?
Yeah, we're pretty much there.
Right, okay.
Did you already around noon? Okay. And then we're kind of looking at like around twenty-five dollars per commissioner. If that works out for you guys.
At least it was fine.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay. Um, the next thing on the list here is for background checks, ACU Source. I've been doing some research on, so currently we have the sheriff's department doing background checks and that we can't be doing it. Or please, that department shouldn't be doing it. And then if there was something that came up from the background check, we actually wouldn't be able to turn an applicant or the person we wanted to hire away because of it, because too much to be able to use that information. And so what I did, I did some research on background companies. And I found out, like LinkedIn, I'm a part of a big HR group out there to see what public agencies are using for background checks and what issues they have and stuff. And then I went out to see if there was any litigation, um, issues with any of them companies that I found. And then I went around to different counties to see who they were using and if they had any issues and recommendations, so. And this ACU Source is the one that came back as our best option to use. And I got a sheet in there for, if you're interested in what is all entailed in the background check. Um, MBRs, you know, when we have employees driving the county vehicles, we really should have an MVR pulled on them just to show that we're doing our due diligence in case they have like records driving DUIs on their record.
We haven't been doing that?
No. I know Kevin for the highway department has had the sheriff pull them. But then again, um, I don't know that that information, we should be using that. If there is something on there, we're denying an employment opportunity for, you know, with the information. So that's why I feel that we have to move to our own company to be pulling that information for us. So, um, the cost of it is, it's a ninety-nine dollar setup fee to set up the county with this company. And then it's forty-seven dollars and fifty cents per, you know, um, background check that we use. And then it's just four dollars and fifty cents per MVR that we pull. And for the MVR, I know Kevin pulls them every year also at the end of the year.
How many have we used in the past, like five years, something, or?
Yeah, it's not very many. It's just, it would be for every new applicant that comes in or every new employee. We'd want our background check before, you know, the condition of.
Crystal, this company does not charge like a subscription fee. It's just when you use it for the service?
Right. It's just that ninety-nine dollar setup fee is the main cost of them.
It actually seems pretty reasonable, really, because. So when, when would we do, say, say we have an open position and then the applicants are put in, so then would we, uh, get down to a final so many and then you do the background checks or only do the background check when you kind of have figured who you want to offer to?
I would do it the offer contingent on their background, sorry.
So every position we have open basically then would have one background check?
Right.
Okay, so it's basically fifty bucks of due diligence or fifty bucks of due diligence to make sure that they have, so it's got a good clean record. And if they're going to be driving it to your driving license.
We, we did the same thing with the library director, we just hired. So we didn't, we didn't run a background check, but when they signed their employment offer, we had, I had them sign another line that said that I consent to a background check.
That was after you offered your job?
That was after. After, it was actually on the same form that they were accepting formally the position. But obviously, the next line down was like, you know, we can rescind this offer if there's issues with the.
I come check up.
It seems like pretty standard operating procedure offer.
It is.
For companies or them, so.
So is that money going to come out of each department that hires then?
Um, that would depend on how you guys want to work that.
I think we should, yeah. Then we can track it.
Yeah, what's, what's the easiest way of tracking, I guess? Just out of each department's miscellaneous budget, basically?
I would think so, yeah.
I think that's the easiest way to do it, because it's not like we hire a ton, you know? Don't have a lot to turn over usually, so it's not going to be a huge budget.
Crystal, one of the questions I would have, you would inform the candidate, you know, that there will be a background check run?
Yeah.
You know, so they have that opportunity to.
To say yes.
Say yes or no at that point.
And then on our application, um, it does notify them. I took out, I redid the application because there was a bill passed that we can actually, um, ask an applicant about their criminal history and tell their, um, part of the selection process. So with that, then there's just a question on there, or not question, but just stating that we're doing a drug test background check. Them things are on there, so.
So you're telling them that we will be doing it.
Right.
So, excuse me, do you need approval then to, to go ahead and do the service now that you're?
I, I would think that we would need it.
Okay.
I guess I'll, I'll make a motion to approve running ahead with using this ACU Source for background checks.
Second, Dan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else?
You said you can't use these background checks. How come?
There's some, okay, so it came up as the Association of Counties, one of the medians, that, I don't know if it's the sheriff's department shouldn't be pulling employment background checks, or there's something true that though at that department.
So I can just say for, like the reports that we get in our office, which are kind of like nationwide ones, under federal law, we can only access and get those for specific reasons. And I'm assuming, Steve's not here to say yes or no, but I'm assuming he's under those same restrictions and they really have to proceed into investigations as opposed to employment checks or snooping on the neighbor or things like that.
He could probably, excuse me, pull like a state record or something.
Or some enforcement reason to pull them would be my guess.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All bear say aye.
Aye.
All hold, motion carries.
And then Crystal, did you need a motion for us to update the employment docs, or is that something you just did?
Um, so that'll be coming up at the, like, employment application.
Yeah.
Um, if you guys want to approve it, it'd probably be best just to, when we get to that point. Okay. If you want to just do it with the policy changes.
Carry on, then. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so on the policy changes, our hiring pro, um, policy and procedure, I updated that to just give us more of a procedure of how we should be done. I feel that HR really should be involved and there should be a screening process done. Um, because right now, if we give an, an applicant stack to a department head, how are they going about choosing who they're bringing in for an interview? You know, so it's important for us to have some background on why we're bringing them in. You know, we want to show that if they're meeting them in qualifications or advertising, we want to show that they're actually qualified for the position. We're not just selecting and there's no discrimination involved in there. So in case of somebody was to come back on us, so. So that was the reason why for updating that and just to get HR more involved in it. So we have a process with it.
I read this, I'd like to take this hiring policy till I can talk to some department heads.
Okay.
I just think this takes all, all the power away from the department heads. If I, if I read this correctly. I mean, that's what we have department heads for, is to run our departments. And you're, you're, you're putting yourself above them. I mean, you're, you're going to select which candidate is going forward. And I, I'd just like to put this one on hold. So we can, maybe even get some department heads in here and talk to them. That's why I did, I read this and I, I don't agree with this at all.
Crystal, have you had the chance to talk to any of the department heads, something to feel about it?
Yeah, we did go through the department head meeting. Um, there was only a couple of department heads that weren't present. And I, there was nothing that came up as issues. Um, the main reason they have HR role, like I said, is when we advertise with a position and put out what we're looking for for qualifications, it's important that we get them applications, screen them for who has them qualifications, and then only let them people go on to that department head. Once they go on to the department head, it's completely left up to the department head on how they're going to score them with the importance to the job. So. And the main reason for it is so that nobody can come back and say that we discriminated against them.
Yeah, I, I don't think it eliminates or takes away the, the department head. I think it includes the HR person in that process. And, uh, but the ultimate decision comes back down to the department head, right?
It does.
But you might eliminate somebody that, say Kevin thinks is a good applicant based upon what you think, not what he thinks. And I, and I don't agree with that. Kevin, Kevin's in charge of his department. Steve's in charge of his department. I think those decisions belong to those department heads. That's why we have department heads. I don't, I don't want to see micromanaging, you know, of departments happen.
But I think how she's trying to explain it is you have, when someone submits an application, it's one through five.
Yeah, I understand.
And if they don't have all five of those boxes checked, then they don't go forward because they didn't.
I understand that.
You know, which eliminates a lot for us to go through and look at.
But I think you missed, you might miss somebody based upon something that, that she, I have an example in my head, but I can't use it. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a, there's an employee in the county right now that probably would have been skipped. And it turns out that it was a very good employee. So I just, I'd like to sit down and talk to, to Kevin and to Steve and, you know, upstairs and to the department heads before I make a decision on this. This, you know, she's going to screen them out prior to Kevin getting them. So if we have ten, and she screens down five out of those ten, there might have been six that were okay. Maybe there's a glitch with that, that sixth one, but it would be a great employee.
But if they didn't follow all the recommendations of applying for the job, then they should.
I understand that, but the recommendations were something, but a little glitch somewhere else.
But if they, if they don't meet the expectations of the, of the county's hiring policies, Kevin or Steve shouldn't be hiring them in the first place.
Well, I guess the fundamental question is, is do we believe that, Crystal, is the best interest of the county at heart? Right? I mean, then she's not going to screen out all five candidates.
We've already used the process with the three corner spots.
But does Crystal, does Crystal know how to run Kevin's department? Does Crystal know how to run any, you know?
Well, I just, I think that Crystal's expertise is in hiring, firing, employment, so.
I, I think the hiring and firing belongs to the department heads.
Just to give you kind of an example, we used, um, kind of the same situation for Kerry E. and I, of course, left it up to them to decide if that's how they want to do it because we didn't have them in place. And they both decided that's how they wanted to do it. And so how we did it, once I screened them, I sat down with, you know, I sat down with them, explained to them which applicants didn't make it, what the reasoning was behind that they didn't make it. And they were completely notified of how many applicants were in the pool and, you know, and how many that didn't make it, what the reasoning was behind it. So they are really involved in it.
Yeah, and when there's an opening, the department heads, the, the supposedly, I guess, would be involved from the beginning because if there's an opening for a specific position, whether it's a new one or an old one, uh, the job description will be updated. The department head then has to sign off on the job description with the minimum requirements. And then the applications come to you and then you just screen out and go, these four don't meet the minimums, basically out of the pack or whatever. And these six go on. And then the department head and the department scores them. And then they go through the interview process.
Correct. And I think it was, uh, that screening criteria or whatever is, and I'm only speaking from my experience, was when Connie retired and we had, um, I provided job description to Crystal. And when I looked at our job description, we updated it. What was the minimum education we wanted in that position? What was the minimum experience we wanted? Or combination thereof? So when I got the pool, um, I can't remember if it was like eight or six that had actually applied, two didn't make it, one because the inquiry came on social media with one item and that person never followed up and got the additional items they needed. And then another person had literally no experience at all in, in legal work, paralegal work, or anything like that. So those were the two people that didn't meet that minimum criteria, thus did not go forward. The rest have the criteria, the combination of education experience that came to me. I scored them based on a week that I assigned to each category. I documented that, provided all of that back to Crystal to keep so that if one of those two came in and said, the reason you didn't pick me was because of this, like, they will know it was because of this. So that's why we used it.
It's giving rationale and backing documentation for why you're not hiring somebody essentially. So if somebody can't come back and say, you didn't hire me because I missed this or the other thing.
I, I didn't feel like my choices were decreased based on the screening process.
Yes. The only question I would have is, so, so say for instance, we have minimum criteria and we set five minimum criteria on a job or something, and we get five applications or something and, and none of them meet the minimum criteria, but maybe one is very close or something. Obviously, I would assume, well, there's hiring practices that has to go into it, but you would converse with the department head and say, nobody met the criteria, but maybe this person could be a higher contingent or something, you know, if they're close. I mean, obviously, I, I assume you're just going to have a dialogue with the department head about how it's going to occur.
Right. And then we just documented to, if nobody met the minimums, that this is the reason for one, the department head chooses being.
Yeah. You could still bring somebody in visiting or, you know, talk to them a little bit.
A good example, uh, maybe like we require a CBL and they may, uh, be a CBL, but we give them six months to get it.
Yeah. And I would assume that you would stipulate that in the, in the advertisement too. You know, CBL preferred what not required will get time to acquire or whatever upon employment.
Well, if we got a commissioner and lots to look into it and lots of tables, I guess I have a problem with that.
I'll probably give you a little bit of time if you want to.
I'm just like table fill next meeting and, and maybe talk to some department heads.
That's fine.
Well, I made a motion, table close to meeting.
I'll say.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? All bear say aye.
Aye.
All hold, motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, the next one's like the, the employment application to eliminate that policy. That one you might want to disable until we.
Okay.
The other one. So I'll wait with that one. Um, and then there's the background check, policy and procedure. There again, it's just updating what we're gonna, exactly what we're gonna do when we do have a new hire. And just for specifying what our process is, our procedure, so.
Can we put that all together then?
We sure can. You guys want to do that? Me, yourself, yes.
Yeah, can we, can we just go on a moment next meeting?
Yeah, that sounds good. And then we can just do it, oh, same with the employment application. Um, that, the main reason, like I said, was because of that bill, um, about asking about their criminal history. So that was the main reason that looking at our employment application. Um, the personnel requisition form, that one's just something new. That is the, um.
Can I, can I stop you? So, so right now, our employment docs are invalid according to the state law. I mean, if we continue to, to use the ones that we have.
It will be once the bill becomes effective.
Okay. Well, then can we, can we take action on that one specifically? Just so that we don't have something on our employment docs that we can't actually ask in case for whatever reason we don't get to it the next meeting? All that we're doing, I think, is right, if I hear you right, is striking the question about the criminal history.
Right.
Yeah, and then you're just adding two questions. Excuse me, correct, it's a, or, or are you willing to submit to a drug, alcohol, and background screen? Which is what we're going to do anyway, so.
Yeah, and then, I mean, there's just little things changed. Um, one of the other things that was changed was maybe contact for a reference. I asked out on every one of the jobs instead of just their current job. So with that, I updated on there. But otherwise, everything's pretty close to the same.
Okay, well, in that, in that vein, I'd make a motion that we adopt the removal of the, you have a criminal history just in case we don't get back to this in the time we matter. And somebody has to, you know, send out that employment docs and we've got a bunch of them we can't ask.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion?
Approving the no employment, employment application, is what you want?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll say.
We have a motion and a second? A second and a half?
Yeah.
So you have any questions on that? All bear say aye.
Aye.
All hold, motion carries.
Um, and then there's just the other two forms is, one is just how we're gonna go ahead and advertise to include all those things that we need in an advertisement. We've been using that now. Um, so the personal requisition form, that's just something so the department head can bring it over to their commissioner and have him sign off on it before it comes over to HR who starts advertising. And the reason for that is just because I always want to make sure the commissioner's in the loop before they see an advertisement of their, or a job. So that's just to kind of, um, go back the app. And so.
A motion to approve, we have a second? All bear say aye.
Aye.
All hold, motion carries.
Okay, the only other thing I got is, um, so we had some stuff come up with our safety and our safety policy. And in our safety policy, it states that we have a safety committee. So the last department head meeting, we discussed having put together an actual safety committee, or we should get that taken on our safety policy. And we decided to go ahead with the safety committee. And then Kristen is going to chair it because she's risk management. And she's been working with the Association of Counties to get a policy for a safety, um, in place. Not a policy, but a safety plan. So it sounds like they're gonna, um, they're hiring somebody currently as a safety person for the Association of Counties. And they're gonna actually work on rounding first for a plan. So our help with it, so.
I do, other counties got a plan, don't they? I mean, we're not the only county that's got a plan, right?
I'm, I'm, the bigger counties have them. Yeah, so.
It's our responsibility, I'm sure.
Do we need a motion on that?
No, you don't. I just wanted to update you guys on that in case you hear about the safety committee. And then they just have representatives throughout the organization that would possibly come into safety concerns.
Okay.
So we're just saying, you know, about that. And then that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Everyone set that on the agenda for the next meeting, or should we wait till July?
Um, up to you guys.
How much time do you think you'll need, more just a couple of weeks?
We need to do it in two weeks, I think.
But I guess Crystal's here Tuesday morning, right? Every Tuesday you're here?
Yeah.
If we wanted to put it off to the first meeting in July, I think that would be.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, thank you.
More convenient for her. We'll be there. Okay, thank you, Crystal.
Yep, thank you guys.
We'll just move into the county tacticalization, we'll hold up our new policy for a little bit.
Yeah, I'll step out and come back.
Okay, we'll fit you in, we'll fit you in. Go ahead, Beth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We call the.
We have to, we have to adjourn, right?
We have to adjourn. We need a motion to adjourn.
Only, only a motion to adjourn and reconvene is the County Board of Tactical Equality.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Second.
We have a second, all payers say aye.
Aye.
All approved, motion carries. Now we can go?
Yeah.
Okay, Beth.
Um, I usually prepare some packets for you to look through, but can't we put them on electronically? So I believe you can follow along if you have any questions on your tablets and that. And, um, I just, I just created an agenda and as usual, we kind of go through the city assessments first. And Gary is here, if you have any questions and go over anything that you'd like.
I can go over it a little bit, I won't drag it out too long. The City Board of Equalization met on April eighth and had a packet of information. I'm not sure if you guys have that or not, but, uh, basically it lays out what, starts out laying out what the duties of the equalization boards are. We had some new city commissioners, so we kind of spent a little bit of time with that over there. But, uh, basically it was a pretty average, a slow year. Our equalization, our sales ratio brought us in at ninety-three on commercial and ninety-one on residential. So we didn't do a, have to do across-the-board market adjustment. So we did a lot of individual appraisal work in some neighborhoods. Overall, the city of Devil's Lake went up about two point five percent. That was our total growth. That included new construction and reappraisal work, so. The TIPS, I think you're all aware that we, we have a number of TIPS, tax increment finance districts within the city. And, uh, they're in there individually, but there's also a summary page that shows how much valuation is sitting out there in these individual TIPS. And that every year, the, the TIP money goes to pay off the bonds on work that was done out there. At this point, we have almost forty million dollars in TIP evaluation out there. That's about one-tenth of our total valuation. So as this comes off, as these TIPS are paid for and comes on, we'll have some good growth along with what's happening in the year that they come off. But there is, yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of dollars all of a sudden, but they're not growing as much. Most of them are pretty well established and, and built on, so the values are there. Uh, taking care of the bond payments every year. Some of them, I think, are gone for some times, like Elkhorn and a few, so.
Yeah, some, some of these are fairly, fairly old there. Uh, is it, is it a ten-year or twenty-year, the TIP districts generally?
They're different, some are ten, some are fifteen, some are, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have that information. Basically, if, it depends on if, if the construction is there and the valuation is there and the money is accumulated, they can pay it off early and get rid of the TIP in whatever amount of time. If they've got the money in the bond to pay off the bond, they can take care of it and then close the TIP off.
Sure. So, so the city just sets the minimum amount that has to be paid per year, is that, is that correct?
Based on the bond payment. If the TIP is slow in the start, basically not generating enough tax increment finance to pay the bond, they'll special that out to the parcels on a, on a special assessment until, it never be done in each individual year until it's actually generating. I think all of them are at this point taking care of themselves. We had sent out about seventy notices to, if we, if we reappraise and increase the value by a certain percentage or a dollar amount, we have to notify the people at our equalization meeting. Sent out about seventy notices. We, we got about ten phone calls, about four or five people came in. We had no one come to our equalization meeting, so. And it's nice, the fifteen days we get them to come in and at least talk to us about it before they come into the, to the board, so. Also with the packet is our, our lists of tax-exempt properties, that's done every year. That's like the churches and charitable, they have to reapply every year for that. We have a list that's approved every year by the city commission. And the homestead credit acts. And then we have our two thousand nineteen disabled veterans or spouse. And that's pretty much, pretty full of that. If you have any questions on it.
Questions? You kind of went up and down, you and the city about two to half percent, is that what you said, Derek?
Roughly, that included new construction and reappraisal work. Our permits have been down the last couple of years at about, we were doing about fifteen million a year in new construction. Last year was five million. Construction has, has slowed down, so.
I, I don't see the Lake Ridge Heritage Center on here, is that, a tax-exempt property?
Yeah, because.
Government.
Government, yeah.
Apply?
Yeah, this, this would be just churches and charitable organizations that have to apply. It's under a different statute.
Sure, okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, just the totals there, there's, there's, uh, the totals that are for the city right now and all approved for two thousand nineteen. We have a total valuation of three hundred and ninety million, eight hundred and seven thousand, which taxable value will, will be about eighteen point five. Meaning a mill will generate about eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars each mill for the city.
That's up, how much, Gary?
It's about two and a half percent over last year, roughly.
Two and a half percent, eighteen?
Yeah, but it's.
What was it last year?
Yeah, it was seventeen point six.
Seventeen six, okay.
You know, and it all depends, there's some, it's always some variables within there that we don't know yet, like utilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, the utilities could go way up or way down and that affects the, add total tax. We just use the total for the utilities that were from the prior year, that's the best available information we can, so.
Okay, just forgot that end of it. Any else we need to go?
That's all I know.
Yeah?
Um, on the city, no, that's.
I'll make a motion to approve the city assessments as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second from the city side of it? You got any questions? All payers say aye.
Aye.
All approved, motion carries. Gary, Gary.
Just, I guess I'm not sure, like our homestead credit applications and the veterans and stuff, I assume that'll just get all with the county, they'll take care of all, okay, thank you.
Okay, Beth?
All right, and now, um, just to kind of go over the townships and cities that are contracted with the county for assessing. We do thirty-eight entities in our office. And we sent over a hundred notices of increase out. I did give you a list, a new packet, I think it's pages two through six, of people that were notified. Um, really, didn't really receive any calls, maybe a couple, and didn't have anyone show up at any of our township meetings or city meetings that we held, so that, so we weren't expecting anybody to be here today. Um, within that packet, we did, um, we were in our third year of the farm residence exemption, believe it or not, and so we did a verified income again this year. With that, we did have to add twenty-one more homes. And we removed three, the now volatile that happened in the past, or new owners or something of that nature. Uh, they were all notified and threatening and that also, and that they are on that list. And that is the main thing over that. Otherwise, we just did individual appraisals as we have been doing on every property, um, just to try and equalize each of them. I think overall, it'll be about a three percent increase, um, but not very, very secret three percent. It just was what was necessary for the property or the area.
So have, um, commercial and residential valuations over time, have they adjusted at about the same rate in terms of, of, of equalization?
I don't think they have in the past this year. Um, the commercial and residential will be very similar, but the commercial is going into that revaluation this summer, which I was going to talk about a little bit after the meeting. But, um, the Band Guard is coming in July. And we'll be sending letters out on the twelfth of June to all the people that, um, will be affected or, you know, that they'll be contacted. And that hopefully will equalize, you know, everything from Edmore to Devil's Lake so that we know exactly why they're being valued the way they are and that. Because there, prior to, just a few years ago, we have many assessors working in these townships. And so, um, we're not really super familiar in why certain values are placed on certain properties.
Yeah, I was just curious, like, looking, looking at the city of Devil's Lake in two thousand and one, uh, commercial over residential, I mean, it was, commercial tax or valuation, I should say, was a hundred and two point eight percent of residential value. And in two thousand and nineteen, it's eighty-two point seven. So that's a swing of twenty-five percent in, you know, twenty years. I was just curious to know why that huge change had happened in valuations. We, do we have fewer businesses and the businesses not being adjusted the same way? Or a whole bunch of people moving to town and just living here?
Yeah, a lot more residential construction. And the, uh, the market value of residential property being increased. There was many years that we did a five to nine percent market increase, just the market adjustment before we even got started on things to, to catch up to that market that was going up. That didn't happen with the commercial. We did some commercial or we did Highway Two in some of the newer areas and we do maybe a, like a two or a three percent across the board. Usually with commercial, you don't end with, you don't end up with market adjustments overall the same because they're individual businesses totally different than my house or your house. I mean, residential is a lot the same, so when you do a market adjustment, it's because the whole market has gone up within the city. And, and as you can see, our residential with the new construction and the market adjustments, uh, it surpassed the, the commercial. I mean, at one time, commercial in the city was higher than residential totally.
Right.
It's a percentage wise, but, yeah.
No, it's just a, just a, I mean, there's nothing other than I noticed it and I thought it was interesting, so that's.
Yeah.
You'll also see, um, as you go back, that we have the list of the homestead credits that we apply, um, the property exemptions, the disabled veterans exemptions, those are all included.
Okay, what's next, Beth?
Um, that is what, I guess, what I have to answer my questions on that portion of it. And then we can move to a motion and then move into Mike.
Motion.
Okay, so do we need a motion to approve or relax one of these things in the, in the rundown then? Like the township separately or any to?
Yeah, we have, we have a motion for like the townships that Connie does assess for.
Yeah.
And then she'll move into the townships that Mike and Daryl, the other assessors do.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the assessment on the township to the assessment forum.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Mike, did you have anything on townships? You all right?
Yeah, everything's fine. I just appreciate the opportunity to work with both of Christie.
Okay.
And we continue to need the county and state support, I'm gonna continue to be certified. They are not coming up with a free training and in contact with the state several times. Sort of complaining about that, otherwise, who puts up, fits up the bill? And it looks like it falls into townships.
Okay.
Is that what, ask the county for money?
We're asking you for money, right? Is that how it works?
Well, I've been increasing a lot of property and you guys are getting more taxes, a lot of townships that I've been serving, so. And rightly so.
Mike and Daryl Jamsa are, are two assessors that are still, um, currently assessing. And I did include any changes they had in that list of changes that I gave you, so. And I did, I didn't hear anything from their people, they must have worked it out at their township meeting.
Yes, we handled everything. Good working relationship with both the Minewalk Township Board and the Stevens Township Board. Getting to know, especially the people in Stevens Township and his neighbors out there, so. We got a, a unique crew of people.
Yeah. Good, good bunch.
Mike, could you remind us how many hours it takes to become certified at the state requirements? Yeah, you have to do ten every two years. Ten every two years? And the biggest, my biggest complaint is some of these, three hour, like a three-hour class could be as much as a hundred, two hundred dollars. Plus the time.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Do we have a motion, we have a second? To approve the townships assessing? Any other questions, all payers say aye?
Aye.
All approved, motion carries.
Page seven is the inundated land sign up. List of properties that we are reducing through that is actually kind of the state program more than anything. We just need to approve it.
Well, actually, I think we needed two motions.
We need two motions.
Yeah.
On that, um, one for the values of townships contracted, two to the county for assessing, and then the other motion to approve values of townships that provide their own assessors. Um, and I guess I'd make that motion.
There you go, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all payers say aye.
Aye.
All approved, motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we approve the inundated land classification.
Second.
Motion and a second? All payers say aye.
Aye.
All approved, motion carries.
And page eight is, um, the recommendations from the soils committee they met on April. And, um, there's just a couple, one person came in with a couple of parcels. And basically what, if you see the committee recommendation, one had already been reduced in the county-wide reduction and possibly they could apply for inundated land in the future. Um, and one, they gave a ten percent reduction with mono buyer or drainage and also recommended that maybe they wanted to look into the inundated land applications. And so it's just to approve that, that the recommendations that people, that's okay.
So it was, the committee went pretty well?
Yeah, Adam stopped by at it also and it went fine. It's definitely had less and less, you know, with less and less flooding.
Okay, a motion.
Move through.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All approved, motion carries. Would the motion number?
Five, yes. Um, as you, I think I was back in January, February I came in and did show you that the state has now stated that our agricultural land average should be around six hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Our last year value was, um, six seventeen and thirty-four cents. So we are. So we are not in the ten percent leeway, but we are supposed, we're out of compliance. We would need to have a minimum of a two percent increase to become compliant. When Ron Huggins stopped by, he was here during our roundup, I did ask him the question of what do you see in the future? You know, without any major change of a drought or something like that, he does foresee that our values will continue to increase in the next few years through it. So that's why I just kind of gave you a range of two to four percent. Four percent would put us around ninety-two.
So we're about ninety-two now?
If we, no, we are under, if we did a four percent increase, it'd be about ninety-two. If we did two percent, I'd be like coming in right at ninety. So fairly close.
Are you not comfortable with three?
I'm okay with three. I, that's why I said two to four.
Right now?
I'm more comfortable with three than two. And that's definitely a decision for, for you guys, but that's where we fall in, in the ratio.
Okay, what's the commissioners think? What do you want to do?
I think three makes sense to me.
Me?
When you say with just three?
Three makes sense to me.
You'll live with three?
I'll live with three.
Okay.
My question would be, so they, Ron was of the opinion that we're going to keep moving up, moving up, moving up. I mean, as a, I mean, we kind of just make the decision every year, but do we want to stay towards the low end of that ninety percent? Or do we want to try to get to the mid-range so that we don't have to jump so much every year if it starts to roll? Or, I mean, you know, because if we get in just the three, it's at ninety-one and then next year, you know?
That's what I was saying.
Or do we, do we want to take incremental steps or a larger step trying to catch up going that maybe next year, you know, we don't know where it's going to go necessarily?
It's kind of a question of do you want to take your lumps now or take your lumps later?
Yeah. Well, at the end of the day, too, the valuation doesn't necessarily mean additional taxation. It just means there's a higher value on it.
I think this particular year, we better use three.
I think that's reasonable. I'm just wanting to bring it up so we can talk about it.
I mean, we're all looking at, you know, maybe increasing commodity prices coming, so hopefully maybe next year we can go up a little more or we have to.
I'll, I'll turn that into a motion to approve a three percent increase.
Okay, we have a motion for three?
Also in that.
You have a second? Any other discussion? All in pairs, yeah?
Aye.
All forward, motion carries. That should do it then, huh?
The only other thing I want to mention was we did look into, we were talking about changing the elevation of, we currently reduce all property tied to the lake at fourteen fifty-three and a half. We did look into if we changed it to fourteen fifty-one. I wanted to come back next month with our new numbers that we just created now and show you with some mapping and that and how it does affect the county. With last year's numbers of eighty percent of the county reduced three point three percent just by adding in that acreage. So, and then we talked about the soils committee and everybody so far has been, you know, quite favorable on it. You know, I definitely want to reach out to more producers around the Churchus Berry area and that, but I did have John Curl and I talked to Dan Webster, some different people in that area, but would like to reach out more. But next month, I'll bring that in if that's all right?
That's fine.
I'll let you, and then maybe this fall, we could make some decisions after the summer and see how everything goes.
Then wait till this fall for a decision?
Yeah, because I would want to, if we were going to make that change, I'd need to know in January so I can get the notices sent out to the landlords and that.
You know by what? October is a difference?
Well, no, really by February, so I can send it.
We got to see, plus advise us some time to see what the league's going to do this.
Yeah, now is when it's going to happen. But that could make some changes on people's taxation with three percent increase, but.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, readjourn as the board passes evaluation and convene and see if we can make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to do that? All in pairs, yeah?
Aye.
All forward, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy, go ahead.
Okay, still busy, staying busy, ninety-three veterans and family members last month. Friday last week, we had that veteran stand down in the memorial building. And being the first one that's ever been held in the lake region, we didn't know what to expect. Well, the people that were there that have been involved in other events like this, we outdid what they thought we were going to do. We had three hundred and twenty people coming through the door. We had nearly thirty vendors representing their programs and products. We had seven homeless veterans new to the area show up and sign up for veterans, for benefits. We had over seventy, seventy veterans sign up and inquire about benefits. So it was very productive, more so than what we could have expected. So it was well-attended and I think we've already had people are asking, are we going to do it again next year? And I think the way this one showed up, we have to have a meeting of our group that we're all involved in this. And, but I believe that if it's not an annual thing, it will be a semi, or a every two-year event at least. So it was a very well-accepted item, so.
Okay, your numbers are staying up good, no?
Oh, yeah, ninety-three for last month and I missed a day for a funeral and, you know, so it was just, we're staying very busy.
Stacy, has the VA gotten more responsive over time?
Well, I wish you would never have brought that up. I am, I'm getting so fed up with having to fight the VA on multiple fronts. And now on June sixth, they brought out, they're bringing out another program to fix the VA. It's called the Mission Act. I got a brochure in the mail and a letter accompanying it. Others are getting it and every few years now, every couple of years, the government has to try to put their fingers in it and make it better when they're adding more bureaucracy and making it over. The thing that, guy came in yesterday, we used to be able to get veterans to go out to the Highway Two on twenty twenty eye care, just to get glasses. They could get exam and glasses through the VA program for eyewear. Well, now they can do the testing out there for the exam, but they can't give them glasses. None of the expect the veterans to grab the fargo to pick up glasses. And this is going to get old real quick.
I think a lot of these policies get put into place without understanding realities of rural America.
Exactly, exactly. And that, that, right there, I mean, we've had that issue just with Ramsey County. The definition of rural by a federal standard, Ramsey County is not considered rural. Stupid. Yeah, so, no, I get, I get frustrated when I hear VA issues that they're trying to make it better when they're, they're just adding more problems and headaches. It's frustrating.
As far as the wait time on, on getting services, has that gotten better or is that still about the same?
It, it was better. Now we're, we're going to see a shift again. I bet guys waiting for surgeries that shouldn't have to wait what, what they're going through. I mean, we shouldn't have to put somebody through six months waiting for a hip surgery. So it's, it's those kind of things. And a lot of it, the VA's bringing on themselves by hiring outside contractors to do scheduling. And then when it comes to payment, the payment to the provider is not getting made because it's delayed by the outside contractor. They don't know how to get the paperwork in the right channel. So it's another level of headache.
There's no simple fixes there?
No, well, if they went back the way it was here ten years ago, that wasn't so bad compared to what they've done lately.
And that was when they did most of everything in-house, correct?
In-house, yep, exactly, yep.
Well, there's been a huge push to privatize almost everything across the federal government and...
If they would go along with that and just pay the bill. Because by not paying the bill, that's where the privatization is getting the, the black eye or the, the dirty feeling about it.
Right.
So it's, it's continued. In the long run, this subject, because of what's going on, I have decided I will retire next year. April first will be my last day and we'll have more conversations about this as we come up, but just to make it official, because I made it official this April.
You put your foot down?
I put my foot down.
Okay.
I am going to retire. Okay.
You got it, you have it rounded up and you made it a fair one.
Yeah, well, that's...
Sorry, sorry, guys.
Anything else, Stacy?
No, no, I, I, I'm good with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Kevin, go ahead.
All right. Carrie, you've got to be somewhere.
So the culvert issue, the culvert policy issue, I have actually been able to spend considerable time going through legal developments in Century Code, conflicts as well as some cases that started as early as nineteen twenty-three. So the line chart of it is it really depends on the situation. Sometimes the county is responsible for the installation and the maintenance of the culverts on the county roads. The township is responsible for the cost of the culvert, the installation, the maintenance on the township roads. If you look at that whole query that came in under the one section that talked about the bridges, so that's only in a narrow situation that the county would be responsible to pay either for a bridge or a culvert at the intersection of an established drain, which then goes to, I think, Adams' thing of what, what the heck is an established drain?
Well, there's a difference between established and assessed, too.
Well, there is a difference, but they're considered the same thing ultimately. And that is out of an AD opinion from nineteen eighty-three as well as one from nineteen eighty-eight and it doesn't look like it's ever really changed. So there's a whole bunch of different factors that come into play ultimately. And then you have the area where we have a lot of resource board wanting to do a drainage project or improve a drainage project or something like that. And then there's the cost sharing between the county and the state and the federal and all of that in those scenarios. So that's the, really the short answer, it depends.
So the short answer is there is no short answer?
Right, and, and the statutes themselves are in conflict, but there's an attorney general opinion that says the only, you can make sense of these statutes is to take this approach. And so that's the ADH one that I have. So I'd like to visit with you and maybe look at maybe an expanded policy just that clarifies those different situations might be more helpful to prevent this coming back. You know, we addressed the culvert issue with the previous township stuff. Right now, it's going to come back again on a county road. It's going to come back again on the bridge and the established drain intersection thing and then also the cost sharing portion under the water resource stuff. But I have everything right here, highlighted, pertinent parts, so.
Well, for me, like we got to get...
That's what I'd like to do.
Comprehension, comprehension.
Yeah, we need to have a great comprehensive policy.
Or policy, which really in reality is probably four pages, three pages, three, four page thing.
So you're telling us?
If you're willing to do that.
Yeah, I am.
You're telling us that you're going to keep working on it?
I am.
Okay.
Then we got to find a legislator that's willing to work with us and maybe they can make the Century Code guide.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah.
Say, hey, go, go get this next one.
And I'll, I'll tell you across, across the state and Kevin, you had some counties at least responded to him about the culvert policies. Some have more expansive, kind of all scenario things. Most people just go, I think, ah. But I have a good handle on it, so I'd like to get us in a good place so it doesn't continue to come back.
Well, one thing about this county, I mean, there's a lot of individual instances throughout the whole county that are going to be different than one, the next one.
Well, and the other thing that would be really...
How much wire going through, how much, how big the culverts are.
The other thing that would be very helpful too is to have that map or at least do we quickly identify township or county road through the drains? And then with the definition that I got, here's what's the established drains. And I don't know if you have those or who would have those.
That established drain thing, that, that's a lot of gray area there. It is small.
But I mean, I think we'd save ourselves a lot of headache if we could try to define some of it, right? Get a, get a map that defines it all.
Be careful.
The next, the next, um...
We'll have to have the next commission.
The next meeting that we have in June, I'm at the summer state's attorney's conference. So it can't wait till the first one in July and if not, you're going to carry the show with what I draft.
We'll wait till July.
Okay.
All good, we'll do that. Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Back to the top, Seth Amory of the Nelson County High Superintendent did talk to me about the cost share on the gravel and on the county line over there, but go ahead. And he figured our share is going to be around seven thousand dollars. They came up with some oil impact money to help pay for some of that gravel too.
How many miles?
Uh, that'll be three, three or four miles that we'll be helping with here. But the whole road is probably twelve, eleven or twelve miles.
Okay. You want a motion on that?
Yeah, motion.
Yeah.
Pay for that. We'll approve the, update for the Nelson County, County Line Road for...
Second. Motion and a second? We're not really paying for that, so it's going to be a roll call, right? Okay, all in pairs, yeah?
Aye.
All forward, motion carries. Go ahead, Kevin.
Update on weight limits, they came off south of Stu yesterday. Tomorrow, they'll be coming off the rest of Ramsey County, just so everybody's aware. If you get a question or whatever, tomorrow morning, we'll be taking all of that.
That road, they never did it? They never took it to company run all that gray down?
No, I had one contact afterwards about, they aren't able to bond. It's a state agency, so they aren't able to bond. So they weren't interested in taking that process, so tomorrow, they'll be able to start.
They can all know on that.
Did they get notice of that? The, the only reason I'm interrupting is because I had gotten a call about that from the state, so.
Did they get notice? No, I haven't known that, but I will. I just found out this morning.
Okay, perfect.
The city decided to extend the length of that culvert out on Ramsey Two under that east ditch so they can accommodate a bike path in the future. It's not being planned right now, but that increased the cost of that culvert to forty-four thousand nine, twenty-fourty. Like last month, the last meeting, we made a motion to approve the thirty-eight, right? Yeah, thirty-eight something, so.
And they're still going to reimburse us with full amount?
Yes.
I'm moving to approve the change.
Okay, motion for the change in culvert on Ramsey County Two?
Second.
Second? All in pairs, yeah?
Aye.
All forward, motion carries.
And then I need to order a load of culverts for inventory out at the yard and that's going to cost us fourteen thousand four hundred fifty-one. Twelve.
You got a motion for the culvert, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All in pairs, yeah?
Aye.
All forward, motion carries.
Rental prices to do our bridge replacements this summer, ironhide heads. I talked to three different salesmen, three different companies. And ironhide was alone at forty-five hundred a month for the excavator and twenty-two hundred a month for the trench packer and I reserved it for two months. Cap was fifty-six hundred for the excavator. They didn't have a trench packer. I already owed, didn't have anything available in my timeframe, so I just need a motion to rent those for two months at that price. So, sorry.
The motion and a second, all in pairs, yeah?
Aye.
All forward, motion carries.
All right, bid results on our base stabilization project, truck route. We only had one bid from Knife River Materials and it was eighty-five thousand five hundred ninety dollars, which was considerably more than what I was estimating, but the city has agreed to help pay for that. So I think if we want to do this project, we should just move forward with it. And since they're helping a half, I can get it in my budget, so.
Okay, you want a motion on that?
A motion to accept that bid from Knife River.
Just clearly, this is the one where they're going to like grind it or pull it up?
Actually, roll it till it...
Roll it till it did?
Yep. Yep. It'll be less, less, it won't disturb the traffic as much that way either.
Should harden it up quite a bit, huh?
Hardened it.
Should harden up the road quite a bit.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you really know the difference. In fact, we should, I kept putting this in writing, where we really only have to blade it maybe once or twice all year, so.
What's the speed of it on that road?
Forty-five? I'll have to look.
Forty-five through the curve.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that sign was...
Fifty-five.
So, fifty-five and then forty-five now that curve.
From the curve all the way to Highway Two.
Trucks, you got slowed down to forty?
Not on that one, because it's a truck route. I mean, the theory behind slowing it down is they don't wreck the roads, and that one should be in a position where it's not getting...
People would say that theory is not right.
I don't know. I, a lot of people do say that. And there's probably some merit to it. I, I can argue either way.
Okay.
I'm going to approve the bid on the truck, truck route stabilization.
Okay, then a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion or questions? All fairs say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any, when the, I'm sorry, time?
No, I talked to them, so I'll find out. Keep everybody up to speed at the next meeting. And when we put that new metal on our shop building, they increased the rain more often. So, I need to put new bigger cutters on our shop, so I'll be getting prices for that. They won't handle it now. That's just an update. And then also, getting, looking for coasts for the mower for our mowing cemeteries. And I haven't got any numbers put together for that yet, just so you're aware. But I don't think that's gonna be high enough where I have to advertise for bids, but I'll keep you up to speed on what's going on.
Can you do a rear discharge on, on that mower then, or?
Nope, we don't. It's a side discharge.
Well, the rear discharge hasn't put, the discharge back on the head zones is the reason that they do that. I don't know, but the city does rear discharge in all their cemetery mowers. But, and I don't know if that's a problem or not.
Generally not. It's more of a, the week before Memorial Day, we do a really good job.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's not a challenge.
Oh, you hit them as much as you can and try to keep everything down.
Right, keep the weeds down.
This time of the year, you can mow once a week and, or you keep grass.
They don't get surgery on those. And then we use that also for mowing, like our repeater station, and some of our shops, bike path. There is a problem with discharge on the bike path, but we just leaf blower or something to clean it off.
Hey, anything else, Kevin?
No, that's it. That's all I have.
Just on that base stabilization, knife, you don't know when they're gonna be in any of that, that's when they're gonna do it, huh?
Yeah, I honestly didn't talk to them. It's like, we sold a bid yesterday.
Yeah, gotta get it nailed down, I guess.
Yeah.
One, you know, the reason that, October's one of those much better.
Yeah, I know, right? Consider the better.
Be honest, if it wasn't done right during, during harvest.
Yeah.
That's usually how that ends up happening.
I will talk to them today, tell them I got the bid, and then I'll find out.
Anything else?
Nope.
Excuse me, I asked one question before I did. What, what, what's the deal with weight limits? I missed the discussion.
Oh, well, they came off Solace and Two yesterday, and then tomorrow they're taking them off, everything.
Okay, 'cause I got a call from the PSC again.
Okay, so we're on one.
They'll be up, they'll come back and tell me.
Then we'll do after eighty thousand.
Yep.
Okay. Move into the site authorization, you guys.
Motion to approve.
A motion, a second? There's one extra one there, I think everybody knows that.
Yep.
You got a second?
All six.
You got a second?
Yep.
All fairs say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Visitors and delegations, anybody wanna address this?
Well, I guess I got a question.
What?
Down there on County Four, they took all the rocks and bladed them into the ditch. It's kinda hard to mow, mow grass with all those big rocks. There's some of them that is about as big as that chair. And I'm not one that's gonna pick them up anymore. I did it every year, but I'm not gonna do it this time. There's a lot, there's been a lot in there. They, they bladed all that stuff off into the grass, and there's big rocks and whatnot.
Sopras all again?
Sopras all again. Typically, they're the ones blading the rocks, and I'm sure we did a few, but they really threw up the ditch.
Could you talk to Kevin, maybe they go out and pick them up their loader?
Yeah, I will.
I know there was one laying on the shoulder that was as big as my chest. I know that. You wouldn't wanna hit that, and it's down in the ditch now.
Yeah.
What are these, riprap rocks, or?
I think they're coming out of the road.
They're coming out of the road, because when the road was built...
They, they put a rock down there?
They, they put, they didn't clean the rocks the first two or three miles when they built it. Because there was a different contractor after it got up the road, and there was no rocks in the road after that.
I wasn't buying there was a loader out and picked it up and got rid of it. But now it's down in the ditch, and I have, still have to buy the loader, so.
I will.
Talk to him, get to it that way.
I could drive it out, get it, and the loader there.
I could too, but...
That's not your job, though.
I'm running that way.
You didn't, you remember.
I gotta remember, you know, when I drive by.
Basically, make a note, put a sticky note, check it, Kevin. We'll pick them up.
We'll get that, then. I mean, you've been buying it.
If you see one, just give me a call rather than wait, you know, I mean...
If you talk, if you see, talk to Sopras, they'll go out and pick them up.
Yeah, they got loaders right there.
Yeah, they got, yeah. Nothing else?
No, we have nothing else.
Okay. Portfolios, who wants to go first? Jeff, go ahead.
All right. All Kerry's busy. We do have our water tour coming up nineteenth of June. And I do have Lucas signed up, so nobody, Dwayne won't toot his horn, but I will do it for him. Listen to the maze.
See it.
Water magazine, Dwayne Nash, Brandon's representative. I know Extension, they're Bill is on the radio every week with his gardening stuff and his cultural information and Bill on the radio and the paper. Four-H Shooting Sports, shotguns program started last night. Will run Mondays and Wednesdays through August. They have their state shoot in August. I think it's the second weekend. They do both craft and speed. They have a four-H national competition down in Bradda, Nebraska. End of June, two representatives from Ramsey County, Zach Koma and Christopher Morsted, will be representing Team North Dakota along with a couple of kids from, I think, Golden, probably the first year in, since the inception of that program, that we have a dominant Ramsey County only team. So, what Christopher Morsted and Zach Koma will be representing Team North Dakota. They're both from Ramsey County. Zach being from right here in Nellis Line, and Christopher from open line, common line, Hammond area. Other than that, that, is that it?
I really don't have a whole lot, you know, with the LAC. I'm sure everybody's aware, they're still working on their video security system, and things are moving along. There's three good days, I've been told. Lots of wires hanging one day, and the next day there's cameras. Moving right along. Other than that, I'm doing pretty quiet. Quiet is good.
Lucas?
The only thing I have is the new library director is arriving in town on June seventh to start his position on June seventeenth.
His neighbor?
Ignacio Mendez.
Were you able to find him, Halsey?
He said he's got a list of about three apartments he wants to look at, and it gets up here. So, hopefully we'll be able to find him something.
Okay, Adam?
Quick, Ford, I was like, I missed the meeting last time because I was up planting. But it was a quick meeting, just updates on projects that are going on. We have a meeting on that tomorrow. I don't know if I ever mentioned it, the North Central Housing Authority, the Ramsey County Housing Authority, we took on Nelson County, so we're overseeing them, helping them out. They have a huge rehabilitation project going on. All of their, they have apartments in four or five different towns, and they're all being rehabilitated because they have mold issues. So, yeah, it's quite, quite the undertaking, because they're having to move people from like Mattville to Michigan and stuff like that, to keep them in apartments while they're rehabilitated. So, it's quite an interesting... Social Services, we have the meeting next weekend in Bismarck for the overview on the twenty-one, twenty-four on the zone creation. We had our second, I'm hoping to go to that, we had our second worker meeting. Everything seems to be going well there. We have kind of the zone plan, just a rough sketch put together. Everybody was pretty much on board. We're gonna have the finalized plan put together by the twenty-fifth of June, and then we'll have one more worker meeting. And then at that point, it will go to the social services boards and commissions to get approval. And we're looking, I think, at an August first Thursday, or we push it to September, I can't remember, but it's in there. But everyone so far is, is happy with it. So, it's like that's gonna be going okay. Other than that, I think that's all they got, and it's a new tractor.
Well, you both covered it on, on, so. Nothing else, I guess?
Yeah. I think we should be, be prepared for the achievement days, for the kids coming up on the, the la, I think it's the last Thursday in June. It's kind of their harvest time, so I think they need a little support.
I agree.
They...
Twenty-seven?
I, I think it is, yeah.
I think that's the hundredth anniversary, they're doing a hundredth anniversary of the Ramsey County Fair Board.
Yep.
Yep.
So, is that the, that's the actual achievement days of their, their building, right?
Right.
On the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh of June.
Come out and say hi, I'll give you a piece of pizza. We usually feed the kids, so.
But I mean, that's kind of their harvest, they work all year. They're worthy of some participation. I mean, attendance, that would be the biggest thing.
There should be people up there. It's quite the undertaking when they have all the livestock showing and all their small animals and stuff. Those kids do a lot of work on all that. So, they deserve something to come on and give them a little recognition.
That's for sure. Thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Nothing else?